Okay.
Okay.
Here.
Chaner.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Moore.
Here. Could we stand for a moment of silence, prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amanda DeBacher? Amanda here? Okay.
We have an proclamation reading for our assistive living communities that act as members of larger community offering the knowledge and life experience of past contribution to a vital part of assisted research history. Whereas assistability is a critical long-term care option for older adults and individuals with disabilities that foster choice, dignity, and interest. Whereas this year's assistive living week being inspiring generation highlights the incredible care provided by essential caregivers who celebrate residents from their families. During this special week, assistive living communities across the country are encouraged to organize activities to enhance, with celebration dedication of the staff's rigidity of the residents and release connections toward them in these sections. Now therefore, our faculty staff and our city assistant community council, who hereby claims to have contributed to four key days of assistive living week, enter dollar assistance to visitor called up on hand and member friend via a care setting, and offer kind words fed time participating various activities to unite those from all walks of life. Now just be gracious you were if you would.
Hi, my name is Amanda. I am with Amira Senior Living. It's the new retirement community that is opening up in downtown Sioux City. We're going to be offering independent living, assisted living, and memory care. So we're going to have a lot of options for your loved one. So if you are interested, please reach out to us. You can find us on our website. It's amiraseniorliving.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to interviews inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. Sandra Baske, Sandra, please come up and tell us a little bit of why you want to serve.
Hi. I'm coming up on retirement soon, and I was trying to find things I could be actively involved in that I could use some of my past skills, past job experience, and this position seems like it's more advocacy than anything else, which is primarily what I've done in my adult employment. So it just seemed like a good fit.
Good. Questions?
Any questions?
Well, wealth of experience advocating for other people, but I was wondering if you could tell us, in particular in your current role working in the school, how you feel that that makes you more equipped than maybe some others in dealing with advocacy?
I currently work in Macy, Nebraska, at Omaha Nation Public Schools, which is a public school but mostly serves Native American students. I advocate on behalf of students who have behavioral issues and also students with mental health crisis and mental health issues. So that's been the majority of what I've done in the last five years. Prior to that, I worked for Sioux City Schools and I did the same position, same grant, which is coming up on the end, we're coming up on the end of the grant, which means retirement for me. So that's what I've been involved with in the last, over the last 10 years.
Questions? I appreciate your making the application to this important committee, so thank you for doing that.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Take care. Next is Board of Trustees, Di Gray.
Hello.
Tell us a little bit about why you want to serve.
I live downtown, and I am ridiculously excited about our library and the things that they are doing. I'm a lifelong resident of Sioux City, except for when I went away to college, and a lifelong volunteer in Sioux City. And I believe that services that our libraries and our museums and our parks offer are integral to part of our community and the quality of life. I also realize that we have limited resources, and I am crazy excited about how our libraries and our museums and our other things are partnering with each other, with other organizations and businesses. A lot of times when I get asked to be on boards or volunteer in work, it's because something needs changed or something needs fixed. This is something I'm just crazy excited and want to be part of. I can't say enough about the cool things that they're doing at the library, and I'd like to be part of it. And not to talk myself out of a job, but if there's somebody else who would do a better job, please assign them and tell the library I'll volunteer.
Questions?
I will say, number one, the enthusiasm came across. I definitely heard that in your application. I really like that you have experience serving on boards in the past, on city boards in the past, and I really appreciated that you didn't talk about maintaining library services. You talked about expanding and growing, whether that's with what we currently have or finding ways to raise funds, and I really appreciated that. My question for you would be that currently our library has a process for reviewing material that people deem to be inappropriate. Do you feel that there's any problem in that current review process?
I don't see any problem in the current review process.
And as a board member, I believe you're going to be responsible for reviewing books that people have complaints against. Are you comfortable with that?
I have no, no problem with that.
Thank you.
Broad shoulders. And on my application, I did forget to put on that I was part of the North High Prom and After Prom Committee with Bob Scott, and that might, that might hurt me, but in full disclosure.
Hopefully, they won't hold that against you like I'm not going to hold that you use Jim Wharton as a reference.
Well, yeah, I kind of wondered about that one. That's why I added Beth.
But you balanced it with Beth, so you did good.
You always have to with that couple.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to the consent agenda today, which is items three through sixteen H. You can consider these items to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on any of these items, please come up as I read them. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Remember to always state your name and record for the, I mean, your name and address for the record. And also remember that because today appears to be a lot of things might be talked about, that we will limit you to three minutes for your comments. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is the reading of the August twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth city council minutes. Four is a motion approving the Civil Service Commission annual report. Five is a motion authorizing negotiations with Advanced Asset Alliance Collections for a Debt Collection Services Contract. Six is a resolution fixing fees for services provided by Parks and Recreation and rescinding resolution twenty-two-four-dish-zero-four-seven-one. Seven is a resolution fixing cemetery fees for services provided by Parks and Recreation and rescinding resolution number twenty-two-four-dish-zero-four-seven-zero. Eight is a resolution accepting the local housing trust fund program application and approving the use of city funds as a match. Jill, is that the one you're going to speak on? Is Jill here? Is that the one you're going to speak on?
Oh, I can't.
Yeah, would you do that, please?
Sure. Jill Wandersheid, Neighborhood Services Manager. This is a grant application that we do every year, and it's for additional funding through the Iowa Finance Authority to partner with all of our housing rehabilitation programs. So we spend approximately, this year it's an increase about $300,000 into that program as well. I can go into the rest of what our staff does currently. Oh, two, okay. So our staff out at the MLK Transportation Center, that's our satellite office, we have approximately, we have 10 staff right now, and we do a lot of work in affordable housing in general. So we do everything from housing rehabilitation, new housing construction that's subsidized, partnering with developers on apartments that are subsidized and low income, and also set aside for homeless or those that are experiencing homelessness and transitioning to housing. And then we also have our homeless services side, which includes several programs. We do our homelessness prevention program, and that provides up to six months of rent for those that are in, that are at risk of losing their housing. And so we have a lot of traffic through our doors for that as well. We have our rapid rehousing program that's also run out of our office, and we have 16 households in that program right now, 51 people total. Those are people that were experiencing homelessness that have now been transferred into housing with case management that our staff provides. We also provide our security deposit program, so that's for people, again, that are looking into getting more permanent housing, provides a security deposit if that's the barrier for them to get into housing. And we also are the keeper of our coordinated entry list for our community. So anyone that's experiencing homelessness that wants, that is looking for services, they do an assessment with our staff, and that's how we determine what are their barriers to housing, what are their needs, how can we assist in connecting them to services. So I pulled the numbers since January first, our staff has done 277 assessments with those needing housing assistance, and right now, as of today, we have 159 people on that list that are waiting for services to get them into more permanent housing. So the IFA grant that we're applying for is just a part of everything that we do for housing in the community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing various downtown streets for the downtown tailgate event. B is a resolution temporarily closing portions of Floyd Boulevard and Jefferson Street for the North High Homecoming Parade. C is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of Forest Street for the Iowa League of Cities Annual Meeting Event. Tenor actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract to city engineering for the annual storm inlet repair project. B is a resolution approving a development minimum assessment agreement with ASNL for property at 701 Gordon Drive.
One thing on that, I don't know if all of you had time to read through kind of the plan or the vision for this building, but I really hope we're proactive with them working with the museum. They plan on really showcasing Sioux City's history and having decor that relates to Sioux City's history, and I think that's a huge opportunity to use some of our digital wares that we have at the museum to help them really do that right.
And the name of the business is?
Yeah.
Built from the date of Sioux City.
When it was founding of Sioux City, that's, I like that.
C is a resolution consenting to the sublease between Oracle Aviation and Morningside University for the use of property at 2403 Aviation Boulevard. D is a resolution approving a post-construction stormwater management plan maintenance agreement and easement with Hog Hedge for property at 3701 South Lewis Boulevard. E is a resolution approving a post-construction stormwater management plan maintenance agreement and easement with Donald Grant Construction for the property at 2008 Hawkeye Drive. F is a resolution approving an amendment number two with OnSolve for code red on-demand emergency notification software as a service. G is a resolution approving a purchase agreement with Steinmar for property on South Court Street. I need to abstain, I do not have a conflict of interest with Steinmar, but I do with a couple of the partners in the property. Eleven's actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the authorized personnel complement by deleting a supervisor position and adding an administrative secretary to the Neighborhood Services Division.
Mayor, could I, I have a question for you, Jill. I was wondering if the resolution shouldn't mirror the write-up that you gave us, that that was a temporary, or at least until, I think it was, what, the end of 2025, that that position would be open? Is there any need to do that in the resolution itself?
We would bring it back at a future date if there was a change.
Well, I'm talking about the temporary full-time administrative secretary position.
Oh, I see.
I know you could bring it, you could come back to the council to extend that, but I wonder if we wanted to state the end date like you did in the summary.
Sure. Jill Wandersheid, Neighborhood Services Manager. What we typically do with our temporary positions, we haven't included it in the past, when it goes into our payroll complement and our operating budget, it goes in there under the temporary positions with a note saying, here's the resolution that approved it, and it's only on the books until this date. So that's how we're kind of kept accountable for that, but if we needed to bring it back and adjust it, that's fine as well.
As long as there's, excuse me, as long as there's a way to track that going forward, that's okay. Thank you, Jill.
B is a resolution amending the position classification manual by approving an updated job description for economic development specialist. C is a resolution amending the position classification manual by approving an updated job description for IT enterprise specialist and system administrator. D is a resolution amending the position classification manual by approving an updated job description for the IT specialist. Twelve are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Parkonect for the revenue control equipment and services for city parking facilities. B is a resolution authorizing the earlier release of retained funds to Mark Albinicious for the Glen Oaks paving patch project. Thirteen are actions relating to property. A is a resolution approving a corrective city deed to Clifford and Jean Tuffy Vacated Omaha Street north of 34th Street. B is a resolution approving a city deed for a property adjacent to 800 to 820 Hamilton Boulevard, the petitioner's Chick-fil-A. Purchasing, A is a motion authorizing negotiations with AXON Enterprises for police department equipment replacement project. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Andritz Separation for Cyclo gearbox for a centrifuge. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to MRI Software for the annual renewal subscription fee for Happy Software. Fifteen are applications for beer and liquor license. Sixteen are boards commission and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items. Seeing none, we'll vote. Seventeen's a hearing in ordinance zoning the newly annexed territory of 1142 225th Street and 2276 Allison Avenue is GI General Industrial. Move that. Second. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone to be heard on this item? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Eighteen's an ordinance rezoning 3700 Jefferson Street, the petitioner's Dolph Eichner. The first consideration was approved on August, oh, I'm sorry, did anybody oppose waiving the statutory rule on seventeen?
No.
Nope.
Okay, I'll move that, sorry. Second.
Chaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
I'll move second, third. Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Okay. Chaner.
Aye.
Again, eighteen, before I read it, just so you know, we are short a council member today. Because enough petitions were turned in, it will take a supermajority, meaning eight, eighty percent, four of the council members will have to vote for that, and so we will take, we'll, we'll open the hearing, but somebody will probably move to defer the item till next week. But you all had to take time off to come here, so we're going to listen to what you have to say, but not vote today, just because we don't have enough council members here to vote, so. Eighteen's an ordinance rezoning 3700 Jefferson Street, the petitioner's Dolph Eichner. The first consideration was August 5th, 2024. Second consideration approved August 12th, 2024, deferred from August 19th, 2024. Somebody will need to move that.
Do we, do we move it if we're deferring it?
You need to move the item if you're going to consider discussion today.
I'll move it.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. Barry Bulkey asked to speak first, and Deb Elbert and Melissa Bulkey, who say they're speaking on behalf of the most of you residents, I don't know if that's the case. If that's the case, then we're going to let them go, and then we'll let the other side speak. So Barry, come on up, and you all have three minutes, it's not limited to three minutes for all three of you, so you got, you got time.
This is our first time, so right here, that work?
You can do it wherever, as long as you got a microphone so people can hear you. Just make sure you, one of you can go to that mic, and the other two can stay there if that works, so.
We're going to go in order, so.
You do it however you want, just so we can hear you.
Okay, so my name is Barry Bulkey. I'm a Leeds resident, business owner, and a member of the Leeds Community Club.
Barry, could you state your address for the record?
Oh, sorry. Forty-one oh-three Jefferson Street.
Just so you know, they turned in cards and we have it.
Oh, we already have it, okay.
Your name will be fine, you've got, you've done.
Okay, no problem. I've lived in Leeds for 21 years, and I'll get back to why that's important. I came here today representing over 521 signatures to our petition on behalf of the Leeds Community Club. I wanted to show on paper how many in the neighborhood were against this rezoning that will be happening in our neighborhood. I have their name, their address, and their signature. I'm going to be honest, I was really surprised how many of us didn't know about the rezoning a few weeks ago, and only recently many of our neighbors have found out about this. I know that only the adjacent property owners were notified by the city, but the issue about it is the rezoning of this magnitude doesn't only affect them. This will affect all of us in Leeds. The new amount of traffic, the dust, the noise, the child safety, and the damage to our property values and equity we have in our homes does not only stop at Floyd Boulevard, it affects us all as a community. I mentioned I lived in Leeds for 21 years at the beginning. The reason why I did so is because I wanted, I went, when I went out in the neighborhood and talked to the people, they defined themselves by how long they live in the Leeds neighborhood. Whether it was one month or over 50 years, they're proud to be part of Leeds. So when I went door-to-door asking their opinion on this, their concerns, it was way different than that meeting we had at North Middle School. Like, that was, that felt like chaos. But when you actually go and you talk to these people, you see how much this is a home and how much they're worried that this is going to affect their home. Like, this isn't, this rezoning is going to hurt us as a community. We still have our parades. Like, we've seen you guys at our parades. We've seen you at our community events. We do our Neighborhood National Night Out. Like, we have our street dances, we have our car show. Like, this year alone, we had the biggest parade we've ever had in our lives. We had the biggest attendance for the street dance, we had the biggest car show, and these people are proud of it, and right next door, if you guys vote to make this rezoning happen, that's going to be right next to where we do everything. We will have the noise there, we will have, no matter what is promised, because we understand. Knife River came to that meeting and said they're going to try. The key word is "try." That doesn't mean they will do. And for us, it's going to hurt us. And, and no matter what they do, it's not going to hurt us. I went to Knife River. Like, I went to their property, they're right next to Headed Park.
Barry, I am going to need you to wrap up yours.
I'll just finish up. I went there to see what they do now versus what they're going to try and do. I invite all of you, go see what they do now, and that will show what we're up against. So please, vote against this to help my neighborhood.
Thank you. Next, we have, according to your order, Deb Elkert.
Hi, my name is Deb Elbert. I purchased my Leeds home 10 years ago based on the existing neighborhood. My home adjoins Leeds Elementary School, where young children attend, and North High School children compete at soccer and football in the backyard, in the backfield. I'm very concerned about the air quality, the noise pollution, and any other toxins that might be presented to us, not only these children, but for myself. My sister was COPD and a very good friend who's on full-time oxygen. This picture was taken standing from the intersection of Floyd and Jefferson. The red brick building is Leeds School. Approximately two blocks away behind that is a dialysis center where critically ill patients receive treatment. I know this because my brother died there a few months ago. No one dealing with these issues should have to deal with the man-made pollution by rezoning this site. I enjoy the recreational trailway system that Sioux City has spent quite a bit of money creating. Where I took this photo is the proposed rezoning area. SiouxCity.org has a beautiful picture, asking, enticing people, visitors and residents alike to enjoy these trails. But on the backside of Knife River, I changed the photo to show you what it would look like if you rezoned that property. All that beautiful free space is gone. I took the, sorry. The tranquility will be gone forever. I'm afraid Leeds neighborhood will end up like many others in an embalmed legal feud as in many other states where Knife River has been allowed to overstep the greater good for profit. I have a copy of an article from Sioux Falls, Dakota News Now, that states that Knife River had broken off of its parent corp, MDU Resources, after being fined $3.4 million since 2000 for OSHA environmental violations, and by separating the companies, it would improve the standing of Knife River in the future. I also have a list of residents in Oregon who have filed in federal court a lawsuit against Knife River for the devastation, loss of property value, lack of promises kept, with responsibility to reclaim land that the company had promised to leave as it had found. When I spoke with Mr. Dick Zimmerly and repeated the comments that Knife River had made at our neighborhood meeting.
I'm going to need you to wrap yours comments up too, okay? Go ahead.
I, when I spoke to him about the comments that Knife River had made at our Wednesday meeting, I was appalled to hear that the same rhetoric and the same verbiage was used in Oregon. They proved not to be such a good neighbor. Dick Zimmerly and Don Porfili will be more than glad to share their experience with Knife River to any council member, and I do have permission to give you their numbers along with everyone else that filed that suit.
Okay.
I sincerely, they sincerely hope that we do not find ourselves in their shoes. It's not too late. I do have a copy of all these legal filings that I've spoken of. Please vote no to rezoning this area to industrial. Let's not live in the pollution, but let's keep it like it is.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I have absolutely terrible eyesight. Would you mind if I took a look at those?
I'm sorry?
Could I please take a look at those, the pictures?
Absolutely. You certainly may.
I was going to ask Nicole if we need those for the record.
If there are additional copies, that would be helpful for the city clerk.
Thank you. All right, now we have Melissa Einhorn Bulkey, I hope I didn't butcher your name, sorry.
Nope, you did just fine.
Okay.
So the major issue isn't Knife River per se, but the rezoning to industrial. That's what we want to stop. And the reason we don't want industrial in our neighborhood is that there's three things that industrial can do that the average residential citizen can't. They have legal manipulation means that we don't have access to, we as residents. They, for one thing, they change their name, they change their parent companies, so you can't keep track of the millions of dollars of fines that their company has paid or the infractions that they've done. The Oregon Cook County residence case is a major one, and I have to be careful how I say this, because their lawyers can come after me. Allegedly, they've contaminated the groundwater for Cook County residents, John Porfili in particular, years and years they've been there, their water was fine, now this company is here, and suddenly their drinking water is no longer potable? And what does Knife River say? Prove that we did it. You're not allowed on our property, but prove it. So now we have citizens having to do drone flights over and allegedly capturing pictures of things that have been buried illegally, and because of their legal manipulation, they hire expert witnesses who can say legally, we didn't know that, we didn't know that. And this is, this is just what industry does. It's not, it's not malicious, it's what they do. Knife River Parent Company, like we said, they have, number two, fines are just a cost of doing business. For them, they don't, they don't care about the fines, they don't care if they get caught. The Knife River Parent Company, according to a researcher, has paid nearly $3.4 million in OSHA fines since 2000. So again, just a cost of doing business. One fine that they have paid in Oregon, and this isn't just Knife River, there's been $300,000. three-hundred-thousand dollars in fines paid by not just Knife River, but tons of different industrial companies, and Knife River paid twenty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars over this Prinville water issue. They don't care, it's just a cost of doing business. Closer to home, in Iowa, they've paid another forty-three-thousand dollars in an EPA penalty, more cost of doing business, no big deal. And Mid-American Energy, they had, um, they were supposed to wait for someone to come out and find the gas lines for them, they decided they didn't want to, they went ahead and dug it up anyway, damaged gas lines, and now they're in court proceedings trying to say they shouldn't have to pay for the damages. So, they told us in the meeting they're great neighbors, that's something a great neighbor does? I don't think so, I don't think we want that as our neighbors. Um, and the third and final thing, they're smooth-talking, they have HR teams, they have, could have psychologists on board who know how to manipulate you to do what they want. They had that Knife River meeting, which was for them to come in, see what the, what our issues were, so they could come in here and talk to you all with smooth answers that everything's gonna be fine. But clearly, they, they don't care until they get caught, and when they do, they'll pay a fine.
Okay, I'm gonna need you to wrap.
So, we're begging you to help protect us from industry, because we can't protect ourselves from, from that. We're not big enough, we don't have the finances, but you can protect us right now, and we're begging you to protect us, and we will remember.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
I don't know if people representing Knife River wanna speak or not, if you do, please come forward.
Um, my name is Dol Fivener, I live at thirty-four-hundred, thirty-four-hundred Talbot Road, Sioux City, Iowa. I'm the property owner. I, I'd like to address all my neighbors. I know you have concerns for Knife River, and you see a green field there, and you think in that green field, everything is, is green and perfect, and I know you have concerns on your health and for Knife River. You want, what I'd like to exactly, like to read you a list of all the chemicals that I'm putting on that ground, that in the wind blow to your houses. So, just so you understand, this is, you know, this green field that you're looking at, it has consequences too. I know Roundup has a, uh, is there a lawsuit against Roundup right now? That there is, you know, so, what you see is a green field and perfectly, you know, lily-white, isn't, and, and I'm a farmer, and I'm willing to admit that, because, because if I wanna figure out how to make my mortgage payment, and I have to compete with all of my neighbors, tha-that's the economics. I mean, I'd love to be an organic farmer, I was an organic farmer in Woodbury County, I was the only guy. You know what the problem is? No one would buy my product, so I was stuck. So, I mean, I, I could read you the list, I mean, we have Ames, Compadore, Radiant, Unifi, Entali, uh, Swagler, Zolax FX, Compadre, like, these are the chemicals that are already flowing to your property, so that, no matter what you do, there is some consequence. So, that's on that issue. Then, right now, we have a monopoly in Sioux City with LG Everest. They're the only game in town, they're the only person that brings rock into our town. We used to have, um, Hagen, Higman, they were bought by Knife River. So, our rock in our town is twice as expensive as the rock in Sioux Falls and Omaha. Now, if you don't think that doesn't have any effect, if you want your children to come back to Sioux City and buy a house, it does, because they have a monopoly and they're able to jack up the price. And not only do they jack up the price, but they love to bring that rock at eight o'clock in the morning and block downtown forty-five minutes and five o'clock at night and block downtown. So, every load of rock that would come in on the backside, would we be one that doesn't block our downtown? And the effect, the effect on you, right now, you have how many unit trains a day going past those two railroad tracks? Probably between four and six?
I'm gonna have, do you have you wrap it up too, Dol?
There's between four and six unit trains a day that come past your yard, so in a week, you have fifty trucks, fifty semis, seventy, not semis, railroads coming right in your backyard. These guys will add two trains a week at most. So, I, I would like our town to be able to grow, and this is one way to do it. There's, UP and the BM are on each side of it, it's a special piece of property, there's nowhere else like that in the country. So, I would appreciate that consideration for, if you're feeling you're giving something up, this is why. Thank you.
Anyone else? You can be next, ma'am, if you wanna come to the front chair. Go ahead.
Uh, thank, uh, Chris Winkle, twenty-two-twenty Hawkeye Drive with Knife River. Uh, I appreciate Barry's, Deb, and Melissa's comments, and, um, I know there was a lot of speak about, uh, what Knife River has done across the country. I've lived in Sioux City for forty-five years, uh, my parents are originally from Leeds, um, and I, I think that public input session where the comments were provided, um, one of the concerns was the dust, um, I think the smell of the asphalt plant was brought up, um, traffic, safety, and noise. Just going through those one by one, if this does get approved for general industrial as part of our site plan, the council will have to review and approve it, so like, as far as the school safety and the truck traffic, um, we are okay with all of our traffic going to the east out of Forty-first Street, so it wouldn't go into Leeds. I mean, we can, uh, we're, that's a promise we'll make. The other promise we'll make is we're not gonna crush at this site, okay? And that'll be in the site plan, because I know the crushing dust was a major factor. The, the other one was the asphalt plant. We've conceded to leave the asphalt plant on Hawkeye Drive. So these are, I mean, just some of the concessions that, I mean, would be in the final site plan, and the noise, uh, I know they, you think the construction noise, but it's nothing compared to the, the train traffic, and the train noise that we all deal with living in Sioux City. The last thing we wanna be is, is bad neighbors and getting calls into the city. Um, I know this is, yeah, a difficult thing, um, and I know, I mean, living in that neighborhood, uh, you know, young children, um, this site would be required to have a fence around it, we've also talked ideas about buring the site, putting in trees, um, and other measures as well. So, I would just, um, I think I've explained the economic benefits of it, um, and a vote against this would be, yeah, there's a lot of economic benefits that would be missed for, as far as taxes, um, to the city, and, uh, lower costs to the city as well as private industry, so, thank you.
Chris, before you go, can I ask, talk a little bit more about the location? I think that's one question.
Yeah.
From the neighborhood meeting, um, that really, I don't believe that it was answered as far, you know, they, people wanna know, well, why don't you go down south? Why don't you go out, you know, by the dump or et cetera? Can you talk a little bit more about this specific site, why?
Yes.
Is so important, and what it produces? What is this rock and this aggregate? Can, can you talk about that?
Yeah, so, this site has access to rail, so instead of bringing in a bunch of rock and sand by truck, it would come in by rail, which is a lot more cost-effective, and it brings those prices down for the building materials, so it's got access to, uh, two rail lines there, and then, uh, it also is fairly centrally, centrally located, like, for example, Berkeley Asphalt is, you know, a half-mile away, you have Standard Ready-Mix down the road, there's good access to Business Seventy-five, which is a truck route, uh, state highway truck route, uh, so, and it's, it meets the size requirement, so, uh, like thirty acres, obviously would take a, you know, some land to, to, uh, stockpile this material, so, you know, it's difficult to find this amount of acres, you know, with rail and in a central location, so.
I, I have a question, and I'm not trying to be cynical, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I, you know, we have about probably four large oil companies at a minimum in this country. They make record amounts of money, and we all wanna blame who's ever in office for high gas prices, when, when oil executives make seventy million dollars a year, you might wanna look at that rather than, and, and you got gas prices that on Country Club Boulevard, Hamilton Boulevard, that are higher than what you have in Floyd, go, at Floyd Walmart or Casey Store. So, the, the, the price of concrete, the aggregate, I'm not very smart, but I'm smart enough to know is controlled by two companies, by and large in this country. So what you do with the price of bringing in rock and sand for that concrete doesn't have as big an impact that, as it does for the actual cement cost, I believe I'm right?
Yeah, aggregate's about seventy percent of the concrete, um, but the, yeah, the per-ten price of the cement is, is quite a bit higher than the aggregate, but it's probably about forty percent of the cost of the concrete, fifty percent.
And one of those companies is your competitor here in town?
Yes.
So you think that company's really gonna lower the price so that you can lower the price on construction jobs? I just gotta really, I'm not being argumentative, I'm just telling you, I have a really hard time believing that they're gonna let you manipulate the price so that their trucks don't run and yours do.
That's a great question, so, like, in the area in Sioux City, there, there's three different cement suppliers, so you have, uh, Ash Grove, Holcim, and GCC. So, we're kind of in a unique area where you get competition between those three, so like, um, GCC, uh, uses their own cement, Standard uses their own cement, well, uh, currently, we use Holcim cement, which doesn't have a ready-mix, so, they wanna get into the market, which helps bring, you know, they're, bring the competition.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's, that's a great question.
So you feel by having your rocks or, is it aggregate? I, I don't know when it becomes aggregate, but by, you're gonna add competition to the LG Everest operation?
Yeah, so, I mean, currently, the, like, the, the aggregate supplied in town comes through downtown there to that site, and it's unloaded there, you could go look at that site, um, so that's where everybody in town buys their rock and sand, it, well, virtually in the tri-state area.
And there's no place else to get it right now?
No.
So, you're gonna create another outlet per?
Yes.
But you're doing that right now, aren't you?
No, I mean, we'll, well, we can't, based on where their price is and that, uh, you need like rail access and enough room to pile this material.
I understand that, but you're actually, I could, isn't Knife River selling concrete today?
Yes, yes.
And, and you're, you're, it, within pennies of dollars of a yard as everybody else right now?
Well, it's funny, we entered the market as a third competitor, and Standard brought their prices down miraculously fifteen dollars a cubic yard, it's amazing what competition will do.
Yep, but not for everybody, they haven't, but that's beside the point, that's not your fault, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, you wanna speak?
Good afternoon, my name is Misty Moffett, I live at forty-four-twenty-five Van Buren Street in Leeds, I live on the dead end of Van Buren. Um, of my fifty-six years, I've lived in that house forty-six, the other ten, I decided to go off and do my own thing and start a family. I lived two blocks off of Floyd Boulevard on Twenty-third Street up on the hill. Each one of those days that Jack Penny was operating for those ten years, we had to listen to the rock-crushing machine, and we had to feel the vibration, we had to listen to the noise, we had to smell the place, and I could not open our windows due to the dust and the noise. I know that this would probably be a little bit different, it may not be bad, um, Chris has said that they aren't going to be crushing rock in their new facility. Look, I want Knife River to grow, we need to grow our community, I have nothing against Knife River. What I am against is they expanding into that area next to the Leeds Community Neighborhood. Alex Waters and I spoke after that meeting, and we had a great conversation, and, and Chris and I even had a great conversation, and, you know, we need companies to grow, they're, they're a great value to our community, we need them to be able to produce what they produce. However, being a good neighbor, I just don't know that they are going to be able to be the good neighbor that the community of Leeds really needs. Their lack of information when it comes to their site plan, their lack of looking for other properties at this point, I just don't think that this is a good idea to zone that area as heavy industrial. I do believe that there are other areas in the city that could prove more beneficial, I understand the logistics, um, my husband and I own a small dumpster rental company, so we know the logistics of having to do miles, um, calculating miles, calculating fuel costs, the cost to do business, you know, we need to make sure that we put our dumpsters and put them in row to pick up and delivery to make sure that we can, you know, pay for the fuel and, and have good, good, uh, numbers. I understand where Knife River's coming from as far as transportation, and it would be beneficial for them, that's the key. This zoning is gonna be only beneficial for them, it will not be beneficial for any of the community of Leeds. This company is a national company, Knife River Midwest is just a region of the nationally-known Knife River and whatever companies they're else under. They have plenty of money to put in a facility somewhere else that is not close to a residential neighborhood, and I implore you, please, listen to the community, listen to the folks of Leeds, look at all of those signatures, and please vote against this rezoning. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm not gonna recognize, you wanna come, you guys gotta come to the microphone, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
I've never done this before, so, okay. My name is Bobby Carpenter, I, I live at thirty-eight-ten Jefferson Street, right at the end of it all.
I'm sorry, ma'am, can you pull the microphone down?
Sorry, right at the end of thirty-eight-ten Jefferson is where I live, I just found out last Monday what was going on from some nice folks that came by, but I also have major health concerns, I have MS, chronic migraine, I can get migraines up to fifteen times a mo, I get treated for all of it, I'm actually disabled over my health conditions, and it's got me and my family worried, what that's gonna look like, 'cause right now, if I look over, yeah, I see beautiful green stuff, and it's peaceful, it's what I need. And so now, if I look out and all that's there, I just need more information on how this is gonna go, because it scares me because of my health and my neighbor's health. We have little Pam across the street, we help try to take care of her, 'cause she had a stroke and she can't do it on her own, and she's all by herself. So as a community, we try to take care of each other, but I'm just so scared, me sitting in my peaceful yard with my two yuck dogs when I've had a really bad sick day, which I have most than not, most generally, I am not well. So when I'm sitting out in my yard, I just need to know, is it gonna still be my peaceful yard, or is there gonna be health concerns that they're not gonna care about after the fact that they take this over? So, I'm just looking for more information and wanted to make my voice heard that I am very concerned about this, and I appreciate your time.
Not gonna limit the discussion, but we're gonna take like one more, and then we're gonna sho-show hands, okay? I think we're getting the general idea where you're at, so go ahead.
Okay, I'm Kathy Fickett, I live at forty-five-thirty-two Arthur Street, I am a Leeds resident of fifty-one years, I left for a little bit, but came back. So, um, I'm concerned that our Leeds Community Club has worked so hard to try to build another family-friendly area, and we're gonna bring in something that's going to make it a harder place for our families to live. I want you guys to realize that the community is strong, we do help our neighbors, we do care about people, and we're trying to make sure that you think about our area as a place that does not need industrial. Anything you do is gonna be something you make for a choice, think about your family when you make your choice.
Thank you. I'm gonna just ask for a show of hands so the council can get a sense, those that would be in favor of the rezoning can raise their hand. Okay, and those that are opposed? Okay, thank you. Again, this will not be voted on today, it will be voted on next Monday, because it, again, it takes a supermajority.
It will be voted on next Monday because it, again, it takes a supermajority. And it would not appear today. I don't count votes. I've not talked to anybody about this. I don't think that's my role. I voted already twice on it. But it takes four votes to be successful, and I sense there won't be four votes today. And so Alex Waters is out of town and asked that we defer that. So I'll entertain a motion to defer for a week. I'll move it.
Second. Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner. Scott.
Aye.
It'll be back next Monday. Nineteens are hearing a resolution assessing a civil penalty of three hundred dollars against Cure CBD invade for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open. Anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
We doing this elect...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Passes four zero. Twenties, a hearing resolution authorizing the IDOT proposal for permanent easement of land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area, the property at 3820 Highway 75 North. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four zero twenty-one, the hearing resolution accepting Agape Community Service Proposal to purchase land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and authorizing a development agreement to property at 3501 Eighth Street.
I'll move it. Second.
Okay.
I'm going to abstain, but I do want, because there's a misconception, it seems to me, from some of my emails, these, this group, I got enough, I don't have a conflict with them. I do nothing with them, but my daughters sit on the board. But they're paying five hundred thousand dollars for this ground. It's not, we're not giving the ground to them. And if you drive by the piece of ground, it's a, unless you're raising billy goats, it's a pretty tough, I don't know how you guys are going to develop, but good luck. Anyway, the public hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard?
One comment. We did get an email from an individual, from a citizen, that requested, especially with the recent announcement of the closing of the warming shelter, that the Agape group look into possibly being able to offer some outreach or consider the homeless population going forward. Take that for what it is. I thought plenty of opportunities and everybody struggles with...
I think that they have agreed with that already, haven't you? When you were here for the other hearings? Because I remember asking that more than once.
Hello, my name is Rochelle Rossen, and my address is 1,400 Vandenberg Circle, Sargent Bluff, Iowa. Yes, we definitely want to love on our homeless population. We want to love on our whole entire community. This is Agape Community Services for a reason. You know, we will definitely provide tools and all of the things necessary, holistic approach if, for any man that wants to come to our treatment. And in the future, way in the future, for women and children too, when we get the funding for that.
The second most asked question is women and children.
Yes, of course. Of course, that's the forty acres. And we are making, our first model has enough room to add on for the second and third phase of the women and teens. We just financially have to start somewhere, and so we are starting with the men.
And I also was contacted by a citizen who, again, you hear it through the grapevine. So they contacted me, and they were concerned that the city was somehow taking funds away from the warming shelter and giving them to Agape. And I made it clear that that wasn't the case. It's, this is a land purchase, and that's nothing more than that.
Yes, we have nothing to do with the warming shelter getting closed.
I just want to make that clear too, right? Absolutely. No funding has been on input to the other.
We are definitely for our community. Want to be of the wraparound service for everything else that we have. And we are not, we are coming in from a lowly loving place. Okay, thank you. Yep, thanks.
Oh, yeah, I guess I'll move, we close the hearing, sorry. Did you put the vote up? You didn't, did you?
Uh, no, I'm still waiting for more.
Okay.
To vote.
Got it. It passes three to zero to one. I abstain. Citizen concerns, are there any citizens that would like to be heard on an item?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Holes. I do not have an address in Sioux City, Iowa, because I am homeless. Guys, you got this all wrong. Not everybody out here is an addict. And not all of us have places to go this winter. We will die out here. We will die. We will freeze to death without the warming shelter. We will not live. You're causing us to want to kill our own selves. Is that helping? We don't want to be out here. We are not who you think we are. We have mental health issues, past traumas that we did not ask for, childhood and adult PTSD, things our families put us through, things our rapists has put us through, things other people have put us through. Unless you sat down and heard every single one of our stories, you have no idea. And every night when we go to sleep, we hope and we pray God to take our lives because this is not what we want. So with judging us and closing down that shelter, you are killing every one of us. That is the only place that we have. We can't go to the gospel mission, not because of, just because of addiction, but because of other things that... Stop that. I can't live with a bunch of people that think they're better than me because of my childhood. So please, please do anything you can to help these people because we will die out here. And you will find more than two hundred people dead on these streets this winter, and that is not good. Community, I'm from Akron, Iowa, community. They brought me five things, clothes and stuff, and I was beaten and sawed as curb for my children. That's community. Letting people die on the street this winter, that's not community. That is selfish, that is unheard of, that is wrong.
Anyone else be heard? Seeing none, we'll go to council concerns. Matthew?
That is, that was terrible news this week with regards to the warming shelter closing. And I really hope that as a community, we can pull together. There is a GoFundMe, so if you would like to help the warming shelter out and try and keep them open, they do have a GoFundMe that's been set up. And hopefully, they will be able to rally enough support to stay open or remain open or reopen, as it were. But it is something that we need to prioritize as a community. We need to make sure that we're taking care of everybody in the community and pulling together. I drive down Hamilton Boulevard most days, and we have individuals that, rough sleepers that are sleeping underneath the old Cricket Building. Everybody on Hamilton drives past them every day. There's always at least half a dozen people out there camped out underneath the building with nowhere to live. When winter hits and they have nowhere to stay, it's something that we need to consider as a community, if we're okay with people not having a roof over their heads. And I've always said that we need to have low barrier or no barrier housing available in the city. And without the warming shelter, there is no other game in town to offer that. So something hopefully everybody's able to reflect on. I had some other notes, but they seem insignificant now, so I yield back.
Okay? Julie?
I have nothing today, sir.
Dan? Thank you, Matthew, for your comments about the warming shelter. Agreement with those and more. So I do have a high note, which I'm with you, Matthew. It's difficult to discuss a high note, especially after the hearing we had today. But I want to talk about Cone Park. Saturday and Sunday, the Nebraska Interscholastic Cycling League's season-opening mountain bike race was just, it was excellent. The Cone Park mountain bike trails are just superb. I asked many people, I was there Saturday night on behalf of the mayor and the council, and I was there Sunday morning, and I asked many people, what could we do to improve our trails, the mountain bike trails? And they said, there's nothing. Your contractor, everybody that worked on them, it just was, it was excellent, and it's unique. We, what we have here in Sioux City is unique across the Midwest. And so Matt Salator and John Burns and all of the Parks and Rec Department should be complimented about that, and the council should be complimented as well. It was just very upbeat. These are seventh graders to twelfth graders that were with parents and with family. And it's definitely a family, it's definitely a family event. So it was really, it was really great, mayor, council. I'm just really pleased that we've had that. I don't think I have anything else either. Thank you. Move, we adjourn. Second.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.